Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Policy Committee meeting of December the 12th. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask trustee Michael if she will lead us in an opening prayer, please.
If you could please sign me, I mean, excuse me, is this on? Yes. If you could please join me in the sign of our faith. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. In this Advent of Expectation draw us together in unity, that our praise and worship might echo in these walls and also through these lives. And this Advent of Expectation draws us together in mission, that the hope within might be the song we sing and the melody of our lives. In this Advent of Expectation draw us together in service, that the path we follow might lead us from a stable to a glimpse of eternity. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Maybe before we do that, I just, could I make one amendment? Because I'm not sure if you have the latest agenda, Tim, right? Sorry, my apologies, trustees. Item 3.3, we were going to remove that item tonight because we don't have enough, we have to change it a little bit more and update it. We had it ready, but then there were some changes, so if trustees would oblige us to remove 3.3 on the agenda. And then could I have a mover for the amended agenda, please? Trustee Marai, trustee Tritz, all in favor? Thank you. May I have an approval of the minutes, please? Trustee Rabenda, trustee Tritz, all in favor? Thank you, so carried. Moving on to action item 3.1, the election of the Chair of the Policy Committee. As this is our first Policy Committee meeting, after the inaugural board meeting, we require a trustee to assume the position of the Chair of the Policy Committee. Nominations are to be duly moved and seconded and received by the Secretary of the Board. I will now ask for nominations to come forward, please. Trustee Michael.
I move that trustee Paul Marai serve as Policy Chair this year, from today until a year's elapses. He has displayed many of the fine qualities needed in a policy chair, and I think he can do the job, as we've seen before.
Thank you, trustee Michael. Do I have a second or please? Trustee Rowe, thank you. Does trustee Marai accept the nomination for the position of Chair of Policy Committee? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And for the final time, are there any more nominations to come forward before closing nominations? Seeing no further nominations, may I request a mover and a second to close the nominations for the position of Chair of Policy Committee? Trustee Michael, trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. I would now like, as trustee Marai has declared the Policy Committee Chair, uh, Policy Committee Chair of the Halton Catholic District School Board for the period of December to the first board meeting in December 2018. Mr. Chair, do you wish to address the meeting?
Very quickly and then we get to work. Just that I really do hope to work collaboratively with all of you in making sure that we have everyone's ideas at this table. And I also want to thank trustee Danko for his, his fine work and on many different policies, including the strategic plan, so thank you for that.
So we're on to action item 3.2, which is Strategic Planning Process. This is third reading, we've seen it before. Superintendent, would you like to comment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The policy is back before the Policy Committee. It has passed first and second reading. No changes have been recommended as before you. I don't know if Superintendent Nagoy wants to say anything, but it is there as it was previous to the last policy meeting.
Comments, questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to know if there was any place we could add in there. So when we had the early French immersion, there was a, a decision to put something in the next strategic plan, that, to make early French immersion a priority. So, I don't know if, I was thinking something like, decided upon voted items for consideration in next cycle of strategic planning, be recorded and be ready for the next cycle. So it's kept track, if, if things come up that we vote on that we think should go into the next strategic planning cycle.
Yep.
Through Mr. Chair. That was a motion that was recorded at a board meeting, so it will indeed happen, I, I believe, and maybe trustee Danko and superintendent Nagoy may correct me, but this was just to outline a process. It wasn't to include specific items. So any motions made at, through the board will, will be recorded and come up, so I think you, we, I know what you're trying to make, ensure, but it is a motion of the board, so it will indeed be part of that.
Any other comments or questions? I just had one, a quick one. It's just, we mentioned ratepayers as one of the stakeholders, and it's not included in the last. Any further questions or con, I know we've seen this many times, so. Okay, with that, do we have a mover for this action item? Trustee Tritz, seconded by trustee Rowe. Ask one more time, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? None? Okay, passes. Oh, sorry, Anthony, was that, was that opposed or, or in paper? Okay, sorry. Oh, and, she said Anthony. Anthony?
John, can you hear this? I understand.
Okay, okay, we'll try to speak into the mic better, so you can hear.
I can hear you, sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Action item 3.3, reporting to parents, could I just have a mover to get this on the, that's the one we just, of course, of course. 3.4, school uniform dress code, could I have a mover to put this on the table? Trustee Tritz, and seconded by trustee Carabella, discussion. So this is the one, I guess, that had quite a bit of feedback. Superintendent?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Policy, bringing back the policy at this meeting was to address the process that occurs for the school uniform dress code for consolidation. We did go out for stakeholder feedback. We did receive a total of 120, 102 responses. Of the 102 responses that we received, nine were related specifically to consolidation and closure and, and new schools. From the feedback, an additional comment was included in regards to grade eights, in regards to the options that they will have for that year, that one year, just as they would if a uniform was to be implemented at this school. And the other comments were around grandfathering in a timeframe, and obviously that is up for discussion. So there is one change that has been made based on the feedback, and that was around the grade eight students.
Thank you. Comments or discussion? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I understand it was sent out for that, but we still did receive other comments that I wanted to ask about. The one about defining uniform assistance, someone asked for families who can't afford the sole supplier, that to, somewhere in the policy, that it be more defined what uniform assistance will be given. And I was wondering whether the ISW does do that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is assistance that is provided. There is a, each school is, is provided with an opportunity for assistance for those families who are coming forth. There were many comments within the feedback. It was specifically going out for the consolidation closure comments, the changes we made to it. So we, we were specific in regards to looking at those comments and the changes we're making related to school consolidation closure. So I, I guess it's a matter of how much we are going to be changing the policy at this point in time. It was specifically going out for those amendments that we had, had made previously.
Trustee Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Is there a spot, as trustee Carabella was asking about the chance to ask for assistance? Is there a spot in the policy where it says that?
Superintendent Soprano, did you want to just comment on?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is nothing in the policy that outlines assistance. It is, it is contract-to-contract based with the supplier. It has typically been part of the, one of the requirements in the RFP process, that the supplier provide a very detailed, extensive uniform assistance program. It is based on percentage of sales, as a total sales. Currently, it's, the practice in schools is that families, either they reach out to the school, to the school principal, or their, their classroom teacher, or if the school's aware that a family's experiencing hardship, they will reach out to families. And under the old supplier, the previous supplier, it was a set number of pieces, which often the complaint was, full transparency here, the, some of the complaints in, in the past were that the number of pieces weren't adequate. And so the new supplier, we negotiated through the RFP process. It is based on a coupon process. The principal has a, a number of dollar coupons at their disposal that they can supply families at their discretion that they think is appropriate. Some, some will get more based on their, their needs. But no family ever is denied the ability to, to be in our schools and to, to wear a uniform. The new supplier has been very, like our previous supplier, has been very generous in the uniform assistance program. But there's nothing written in the policy, there's no exact language. It is, it is based on the contract with our supplier that they will supply it, and it is written in the RFP process that they provide a uniform assistance program.
Just trustee Rowe, but trustee Quinn, we're just on 3.4, which is the school uniform dress code. And the question was just asked about help from the provider on, on maybe students who need it. And as superintendent Soprano was explaining, the new process for that. Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the explanation. And I think the complication, the complicated explanation just merits that an overarching principle should be put into the policy that says that, that, that the board will do something if, if requested, you know? I mean, we, we've got, so we've got to deal with the supplier right now, but that could change. We've got a, we've got a charity, a children's charity, so there's other sources of income that could be used. So I think, I think an overarching principle, I'm not sure how you want to word it, but I, I think that's a good idea to include that.
So on that note, do we want to suggest specific wording right now at this policy meeting, or do we want to ask for a paragraph maybe to be included that goes to the board, and then we can amend it at the board? I think it's better if we kind of push this along, because I don't think it's a controversial item. Superintendent, would you feel comfortable putting some wording of that, that would be brought to the board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Carabella.
Can that be highlighted? Can Zoe pops out and have to search it? Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Oh, yes. Yes, trustee Rabenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, we must remember, certainly with the secondary schools, that there is a trading back with the secondary schools, or if your child has graduated and the clothing is still in good condition, they are willing to take it in, and that goes out too. Because if you go into some of the, the offices around the school administration area, quite often we'll see a closet full of clothes that are all freshly laundered and so forth for use.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I did notice one other comment that caught my attention was about something to do with Civis Day, adding a dress requirement for a Civis Day. That's sort of not addressed in the uniform policy, that when they wear civis, that could be added in the policy as well, that they follow a dress code.
Okay, trustee Rowe, and then trustee Michael.
Well, would that not be covered under point number two, where the elementary school dress code would be set? Or I guess that says elementary, though? Okay.
Very, thank you.
Trustee Michael.
Is there not something written somewhere, that what, like a dress code or a standard that has to be worn on Civis Day at high schools? Yeah. Thank you.
Trustee Tritz.
Just further to trustee Michael's, I find the secondary schools pretty good at itemizing each, each time they have it. So everybody knows, and they can't say they didn't know, so.
So just, just to clarify, I guess for the superintendent, do we want to include a specific, do we want to include a specific item in there, a paragraph in there that, that goes into further detail, or no? Not, I'm not, or, or taken care of already in, in the communication from the, the schools? I guess it's really if you, if you'd like it in there or not, in, in policy itself.
You know, I don't have the policy for me right here in front. I just remember that comment, and I, then I went back to search, and I thought, you know, we, we could put something in there. Just again, an overarching, general comment that Civis Day has to follow the high school dress code.
Director Dawson, you to comment.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The very last line in the policy, I think on number five, the school's agenda book has the dress code in it, so it references that here in the very last line.
Thank you.
Trustee Quinn, and then trustee Rowe.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps to superintendent Overhold. I know that you, you wanted to highlight the nine responses, but I don't think we can overlook the 102 minus nine responses of dissatisfaction with the supplier. Almost every other comment expresses dissatisfaction with our current supplier. So if the parents aren't that concerned about the amalgamation of schools, but they're, they want to talk about the quality of supplier, I think we should address that at a future meeting with a, with a view to September of 2018, because obviously we're not satisfying their needs, and they're disappointed with what we've chosen for them.
Director Dawson?
Make a comment, and then maybe Tim or Camilo. The current supplier came into effect this January, so they had a bit of time to wait and then gear up for September. And the similar, similar things happened when we first had McCarthy, too. Like they probably didn't anticipate the, the, the need and didn't have enough, so there was a backlog. I know there's, there's some comments in here about the quality, but we definitely will be sharing, sharing what we're hearing, and I know Camilo's in constant communication with the president and with the rep. And I think they, they kind of get the, the hint now of, of the demand and there are, what is needed here, and that we're looking to make sure that the quality is good. And we, when we did the RFP, and I wasn't in the, I wasn't there for the, for the picking of the uniform, but the material presented was comparable to what was currently in play with McCarthy's. But we will be sharing all of this information with, with our supplier.
Trustee Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was actually just going to continue trustee Carabella's request, and, and the director mentioned number five there, school's uniform dress code. But could we also add, like, the school's uniform and, and civis dress code? So that it's just written there that it will be outlined, like, in Civis Day and Uniform Days? Thank you.
Trustee Michael.
And spirit wear days, too.
Civis and spirit wear?
Spirit wear, too. Like sometimes they have spirit wear days? And three.
Okay. We can make an amendment for that, or if we all agree on that pretty simple, if, if everyone's in agreement to add those two words, we can just do that and move on? Okay? So that's another, that change will, okay. Trustee Carabella.
Well, I went through all the comments, so I just had another question. Daniel A. on page 30, he says, "The fact that there is only one supplier in terms of uniform goes against the Canadian Competition, Competition Act." So can someone comment on that? Page 30? And it's Daniel A., the second comment. I would have to refer to our purchasing manager for, for that, but I, if, we did an RFP, it's, it's, it's a fair and competitive process.
Superintendent, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It follows our purchasing policy and also the broader public sector directive. It's a competitive bid, as we do with various contracts over a certain amount, and vendors, it's open for bidding for anyone who would qualify with our requirements, and therefore it's not precluding anyone from, from having an opportunity to win the contract.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, to follow up and to make this point once again. We have a policy in place that doesn't control our purchasing, but we're trying to put that on the purchasing of another party. So I don't see how our policies can apply to a, to another party. It's not that our board is buying these, these, these goods. Families are buying these goods, so I don't see how our policies, how can we can pretend to think we have the power to put our policies on behalf, on to other parents. It's just inane, I think is the word, to, to understand that we do not have the power to make other people buy things they don't want to buy if they want to attend our schools, and by forcing them to, we are, we are getting in the way of a publicly funded education. Thank you.
So just, just commenting on those couple of comments, I, I think it's come up before at this, at this, when talking about this, this specific policy, and I think the, the board, again, can address, can technically address it right now, if you'd like to address or make amendments. Or you, or, you know, or, or you can decide to have, to ask for, to come up at a, at a different time, and we're specifically dealing, I guess, with, with that. And I'm open to anything, but would like your, your suggestion, if you want to make amendments now, or if you'd like us to discuss it at a future date, or, or not at all. Maybe the will of the board is to not discuss it at all, but go ahead.
Well, I'll just follow up then. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the note from the parent that trustee Carabella read said it was illegal for us to do such a thing. And our response through the superintendent was that, oh, no, we put an, an RFP out, so we're okay. But an RFP is for school purchases, it's not for parental purchases. So I don't see how it has any answer to the query that the parent has, saying, "You're forcing us to buy things in a monopolistic way. We put an RFP out, but we don't speak on behalf of the people buying the clothing."
Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. School-generated funds are consolidated in our financial statements. They are our responsibility, and they, they follow the policies and procedures of the board and ministry's guidelines on how to be spent. It is in full cooperation with ministry's guidelines. Again, they're on our books. Parents are voting whether or not to have a uniform at their school, and through that, they will have to use the provider that the board has awarded through a competitive bid.
Any further comments or questions on this policy? Trustee Carabella.
Just one more, thank you, Mr. Chair. About parent, I hear they had a chance to respond, have parent, parental input that went out to whoever was able to access the, the comment sheet. But the next time we, we, this policy comes up, how are we going to engage parents on a broader, on a broader scale than just through CPIC or the, the stakeholders that it currently went out to?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have a, a list of stakeholders in which we normally send the information out to. If they, if the will of the trustees wishes to go further and be directed specifically to every parent, that is possible as well. But our normal process and practice is we have a, a standing group of stakeholders we go to, which includes council, council chairs, which would bring you back to their councils, CPIC, CAC, and so on. So we have that normal process in place.
Further questions or comments? Trustee Michael.
I was just going to say, I don't know if you, if you mean this, but I noticed that the two or three classes or schools that are going for uniform votes this February, there's certain standards they have to go by. I think there's St. Martin Reeds might be one. But there, there's standards they have to go to this information, right? So if you go on your family, if you go on your school, it's newsletter, it'll tell you what stage of the game they're at, and you can attend.
Any other questions or comments? So I think we had a couple of updates. The first was a charitable paragraph that superintendent, that Tim's going to, to bring in civis language, specifically on those three items that were, were mentioned. This is moved by trustee Tritz and seconded by trustee Carabella to move to the next board meeting. Could we have a vote? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, passes. So we'll move to the December 19th meeting. So moving on. We're moving on to the item 3.4, Criminal Reference Check, applications for employment. Could I have a mover for this policy? Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee, trustee Michael. And now discussion, or if you would... Oh, and superintendent O'Hara?
Thank you, and through the chair. The report before you represents no changes to the existing policy. It has been reviewed by staff, and there's no requirement to make any changes at this time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Yeah, trustee Quinn.
So why are we voting on a policy that has to be changed?
So, that's a great question, trustee Quinn. No, understood, but if there's no changes to it? Okay, so what we're doing is we're reaffirming that we, we agree with it? We don't do that for every policy. I don't, I don't think it's only when it comes up in the...
Through you, Mr. Chair. Every, we're going on a three-year cycle, so every policy will be reviewed on a three-year basis. So we do want record that it has been reviewed, and that there's no changes that's been made to the policy, so that we, we have that, that it's standardized that every three years that policy has been reviewed.
Any questions or comments to that? Trustee Quinn?
Maybe, just to, to get a better sense of that, how many policies do we have? And how long would it, does it take to go through the cycle of all the policies? Is it logical that we could do all of them in three years with a dozen meetings a year, the most? I don't, I don't see the math working there.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I set a schedule out last year, where we had a three-year schedule, where all policy was going to be covered. Last year we covered 51, I believe, and this year we're on schedule to do similar now. So it is a three-year schedule that we should be able to maintain.
So we're going back to the vote. All in favor? Opposed? None? It passes. We're moving on to item 3.5, Curriculum Writing. Could I have a mover? Oh, this is a fun, could I have a mover? Trustee Michael, and seconded by trustee Rowe. Comments to it? It's pretty clear.
You, you, Mr. Chair. This is another one of those very in-depth policies that we have on record. The policy that you have before you, curriculum writing, probably came back from a time when we had a number of writing teams that would take place over the summer and work on curriculum based on ministry guidelines, ministry curriculum that was coming out. What I see with the policy is before you is that the purpose and the requirements certainly are somewhat disconnected. It's more of about remuneration rather than it is about curriculum writing. There are many, there are other areas in which teachers are remunerated for work beyond the regular day of work that they do. So our recommendation is that we rescind this policy as it really does not have a purpose as to what the policy is there for. So up for discussion, I guess.
Discussion. Trustee Quinn.
Maybe a question to Roxanna then. Do we have any concerns about oversight of payments if we don't have a policy in place that would, that would cover such payments beyond the scope of the regular teaching day?
Through you, Mr. Chair. In terms of oversight, they do get paid at the continuing education rate, so it would go through payroll. They would be certainly documented in terms of the hours that they've been working in the summertime if they were to have that. We've had very few over the last couple of years, so that would be documentation that would be forwarded through HR to payroll, I believe.
Trustee Quinn.
Yeah, I think it's just, has this ever been a concern for purposes of fraud or anything like that, like having some kind of oversight of this? Just someone assigning it, someone doing the work, is there a broader oversight for extracurricular payments beyond...
I'll speak to it because I've been on one of these summer writing teams many years ago and there would be a superintendent oversight anyway and the people would report every day and you would clock your hours and then the superintendent would report to HR and payroll and you would be remunerated accordingly.
Is there a policy for that?
No. And because we've kind of got out of the summer writing thing, I think that's why we're bringing it. It was when the new curriculum, when the curriculum came out in late nineteen nineties, we needed to do this. It doesn't happen that much anymore, so, and normally if there's summer writing, which we participate in as a board through the Catholic Curriculum Corporation, they look after remunerating teachers.
Further comments, questions? See none? We have a mover and a seconder. All in favor? Opposed? See none? It passes. Moving on to discussion item, executive compensation. So I guess I'm just going to speak to this. So I forwarded along and, you know, sorry for your patience on it, but I think it actually is a good start to discussion on this item and this meeting's meant to be, just to get some thoughts of the wider group. So I'll just quickly take you through the discussion report and some of the ancillary documents that I've attached to it. First off, you look at the motion that we passed back in October that basically states we would like to pass a executive compensation policy for our director and executive officers and that would include, this is, I guess, important to the motion, the final approval of any compensation changes to that group of individuals. So I guess a couple of things to note I put in here and, you know, I'm sure staff may want to comment on them and happy to get some perspective from their view. First off, as you know, we put out our proposed executive compensation program, which we voted on earlier in the year, out to the public in November because we were required to by the province. That is now, the commentary has now closed and I think we're going to get feedback on that upcoming. And I just want through some of the things we need to kind of keep in mind when developing this policy. Obviously, the Executive Compensation Act, the regulation which comes from the Act. I commented and I'm just trying to split out my commentary from the specific regulations and that is, it doesn't mean we can't go further on transparency and accountability or come up with ideas on different compensation proposals. Other organizations do. Obviously, we need to look back and make sure we're in compliance with the province, but new ideas probably are welcome. Also comment that, you know, although there's a fifty percent band talked about on pay scales to similar organizations, the Act, as far as I read it, only talks about caps in it. Obviously, we need to be competitive with our coterminist boards and similar boards across the province, so that needs to be kept in mind, but a cap is all that's mentioned. I thought I'd also outline, I was thinking of writing the entire policy, but I thought it would be a little bit presumptuous to do before we had the discussion, but frankly, I think that the pieces are very clearly laid out and if you look at any other executive compensation policy, be it at a university or a school board or even some corporations, they basically follow the same lines. We're going to have definitions, which every policy has. The big ones are compensation philosophy. Some get into the weeds and talk about eligible compensation versus ineligible. A lot of times this goes into different benefits and maybe it doesn't apply so much to us, but we may want to mention it. You know, in the past when we were talking about compensation, I guess when this was a notice of motion, some people talked about different merit pay and things like that. So I think that can be a discussion and the structure of compensation can be, you know, commented on and we're probably going to want to make it explicit within the policy itself because I think the whole point of this is to provide transparency to the public. I think important to the original motion that we passed as a board, the approval of compensation and how that actually occurs is important to outline, be it an annual vote or depending on the feedback we get. And that could involve obviously the director who employs the SOs. And then finally, many of these policies just include transparency and public feedback and how we articulate this to the broader public. And we obviously already do this through the Sunshine List. It doesn't mean that we can go further and also post it to our own board and post it in advance. I think a lot of times, you know, we have a lot of questions going back and forth as to where these numbers come from and sometimes a lot of explanation needs to even come back to the trustees as to how these things were calculated, which is reasonable because it can involve certain half-years and years of more weeks and such, but I think it's important that all of us can answer to the public where these numbers come from when it's being posted because every year there is a, an article on the Sunshine List in Halton and as boards mention. So I think that's just a reasonable request as well. So if you turn the page, I don't know if you had a chance, I just comment on a couple more things. First off, I just mentioned, you know, I think it's important that it's dynamic and competitive, but again, that's my own perspective and at the end of the day, you may just say we should just have a straight-out salary and a salary cap and a specific increase every year that's mentioned in the policy and that's it and we're going to leave it and never look at it again. That's an option. I specified and there aren't great examples in Ontario. When I talked to Oxta, they mentioned that the Ontario Catholic Board is looking at developing a compensation policy and they're also speaking with some lawyers as well and they offered to, if there is areas to share information, they offered to also help from that perspective, so I just thought I'd mention that, that there may be some resources that we can funnel down to the board. I, just like, I wanted to highlight a couple items in the three policies I attached. The first being, you know, other boards and this may not be Ontario, but it's in the country, do specify that the board has the final decision over the salary increases. Further than that, I thought that the Abbotsford School Board also in B.C., there's two policies from B.C., did a good job of itemizing benefits versus, you know, base compensation and it's something that I think if we're going to develop an executive compensation policy, we probably want to split out and include. And finally, I just thought the University of Windsor had a, had one that really referenced the regulation and I took actually some of our, the proposed outline of what the policy would look like or the aspects that would be included, the parts, I took some of that from the University of Windsor. So attached to this report, I tried to outline it in order, so you have what we made public to the board, the proposed executive, what we made public to the public on our board website, the proposed executive compensation report for Ontario's publicly funded school boards, which we're going to get responses from, and then it goes through the Ontario regulation and there's also a link if you want to search anything in there. And then it includes the Langley One B.C. School Board, the Abbotsford School Board, both have different types of policies written in different ways and the governed by the same regulation in British Columbia. And then the third one is the University of Windsor. And then the final, I just don't want to make this too long, but the final item is I just put a proposed path forward for us. So the motion does specify, which is a pretty short timeline, but I know we're all open to getting a lot done, looks at this being passed by the board in March twenty eighteen and the biggest concern, I guess, is that we go out for public consultation and get feedback on it. So I did put a path forward that I'll ask the director to comment on in a few minutes because that can be amended and if the trustees do want to amend it in any way, we can do that as well, but I just thought I'd put something to paper so we know what direction we're going in. And then I thought, okay, how do we kind of discuss this today to make it like a fruitful, fruitful discussion? My thoughts are like, any executive compensation has, you know, some, I guess, more substantive parts and then some, I guess, less substantive parts. I guess I want to comment on the aspects that I mentioned would make up the policy to make sure that that's in the right direction or any others that you'd like to add. Further to that, I thought we should discuss any current limitations and we may want to go in camera for that as well if the discussion gets too deep, but there are obviously probably limitations to how we can view the current envelope and what we do with it, given current contracts. So that, before we can actually maybe write, talk about the substantive issues, we probably have to talk about where we're starting from and maybe other trustees have a better idea than I do, but I don't have a very clear idea of what our entire executive compensation looks like today. So I think that's a starting point. From there, I'd like to move on to maybe some of the substantive points like pay structure, the potential of incentive pay in the policy itself or any other items that you'd like to talk about in there. And the third being how you'd like to include the public consultation or the transparency aspect of the policy. So does that sound like a fair, if we go through those three items today, maybe we can get a good discussion going and then we can add or take away from there. So on that note, director, would you like us, would you like to speak in public about this or do you feel there's any need to go in camera to discuss any current limitations or the current contracts that are in place?
Just to address, first of all, the timeline for the policy development. According to the information we received from the Treasury Board and from the ministry, we are, if we want to meet the timelines for executive compensation for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the trustees would need to land on a final decision in terms of the compensation program itself by February twenty eighth. That doesn't preclude from continuing to work on, work on the policy, however, the one thing that is important to, the trustees have to do is decide on and confirm the final thing before it does get posted forever on the website after it's, after you've approved it. The policy itself, if you're going to talk about more detailed compensation, I wouldn't think that is a conversation for a public meeting, it's more for in camera, but for sure on how to develop a policy with related to, just like the Windsor one, looks very much like, well, they had to follow the Ontario guide, so they kind of condensed it a little bit and I think you can talk similarly using these samples in order to develop a policy.
Okay, well, I don't think, I think the, thank you for bringing up the Treasury Board question. Now, one clarification on that for the, now, does that just, is that just confirming the increase in the envelope amount that went out for public consultation and out? So that's going to be confirmed, which we frankly already voted on. This is then, this basically affects the distribution of those funds. That's how I saw it anyway and of course I'm, you know, open to other interpretations of it, but I think our, I think March covers that and we can make a decision on the, when we get the public feedback on the envelope and move from there, but I think it's not like we're going to start paying people differently as of February, we're just laying out the plan for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Okay. So on that note, I think, and I'm looking around just to see if there's any questions or comments on this, I would like to go in camera to discuss where the starting point is. And the reason being is, we have an envelope and if everything is taken up in that envelope already, our starting point is, yeah. Trustee Quinn.
So let me ask a question of the director then. Under the regulations that Paul has shared with us in his document, his briefing, are there opportunities for us to spend outside of that envelope on executive compensation?
Yes.
So...
Lots of things come out of our board budget, right?
So we could, through some policy changes, have incentives, have bonuses, have other benchmarks that would increase the salaries beyond the envelope that we've been given.
So I just want to, so superintendent O'Hara and I'm going to make a comment, but go ahead.
The chair did go and provide a copy of the regulation and I do want to point you to Regulation three oh four sixteen specifically on page two of ten and it talks about a designated employer and the things that cannot be included in there. So there's a long list and so there are restrictions in terms of, you know, the creativity that can be agreed to. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And one thing I think we need to keep in mind and, you know, please correct me if you like, if you think I'm not speaking, but the way I've read this is, we have the envelope that exists today, that's what's happening today. Then we've asked the Ministry of Education for funding of two point six percent. We can do whatever we want with that two point six percent to staffing salaries. So for, take an extreme example, let's say that we did a review of every, Paula did a review of her staff, we did a review of Paula and at the end of the day, one person was exceptional and did ninety percent of the work or a hundred percent of the work and we decide to give the entire additional amount as merit pay to that individual. As a board, we could decide to do that for that increase. Now, we're limited by the current contracts in place, so that's why I thought it was a starting point to talk about in camera what we're limited with today and then from there say, how do we want to structure compensation going forward? Trustee Quinn.
Could I recommend that we finish the rest of the agenda and then go in camera to finish that discussion? That way the superintendents who are around the table can finish their business and we can continue our conversation at the end of the meeting.
Great, great idea. So we're on to discussion item four point two. Yeah, marijuana. Tim.
Superintendent.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Timely that today the Ontario government passed the Cannabis Act that's going to take effect on July first. I've become an expert over the last two weeks on cannabis. So what the information, you have a number of documents that have been provided for you that gives information in regards to the proposed federal government legislation on cannabis that's to be implemented on July first. The documents that were given... The documents that were given were proposed changes that the Ontario government were putting in place. Bill 174 was introduced on November 1st. Specific parts do relate to the impact on Ontario schools. I'll kinda mention the areas that I do believe has, have that impact, that it's illegal for people under the age of 19 to buy, sell, have or share recreational cannabis. Recreational cannabis will only be permitted to be used on private residences, not allowed to be used recreational cannabis in any public place, workplace, and motorized vehicles, and medical users are not to be allowed to smoke or vape medical cannabis in enclosed workplaces, enclosed public places, motorized vehicles, and other smoke-free places. So the changes to the Act specifically will require changes around the code of conduct, also around suspensions and expulsions. So stakeholder groups are continuing to meet, including the education sector in regards to that. Again, changes in regards to our policies, obviously, with now that the Act has been passed and will be in effect on July 1st, there's obviously some policies that we need to look at, that we may have to make some changes to them that ensure that that is placed in, particularly around our progressive discipline policy.
Trusty Quinn.
So it seems the provincial government intends to treat cannabis like tobacco when it comes to youth, just adding a year to the possession regulations. You have to be 19 to have it, just like in Ontario, you have to be 18 to have cigarettes. What is our current policy on tobacco possession in the schools? Or the use of tobacco on school property?
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I will get clarification, however, a individual is not, for smoking tobacco, they are allowed to smoke tobacco, is not against the law for someone who is under the age of 19 to smoke tobacco. Alcohol will be similar in its implementation in law. Vendors can only sell tobacco to individuals, I believe, and I have to double check, I believe it's 18, but I'd have to double check on that. So there's a little bit of a difference, I know they do mention in here that's similar to that, but law enforcement would be different. Again, someone who is under 18 can smoke cigarettes, tobacco, however, they would not be able to smoke cannabis. That would be the difference between the two.
Thank you. One of the reasons I brought this up and wanted to address it so quickly was to dig into what the potential scenarios will be when students have ubiquitous access to cannabis when this new law comes through. The interest of the federal government was to decriminalize possession of marijuana, so I don't see 18-year-olds and 17-year-olds and 16-year-olds being punished in any way beyond taking it off of them, and maybe writing a $50 citation. So I'm concerned that we're going to have conflicting rights of students and our interest in protecting them from cannabis on our school property.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In regards to, on school property, it would be similar to someone having, if they have possession of something that is illegal, they would be, it would be investigation, there'd be possible suspensions that be put in place, if they're under the influence, just like they would be under the influence of alcohol, it'd be the same process that would be taking place at the school level. Investigation would occur to make sure they have all the facts, and they would act on that according to the specific circumstances of the situation.
Superintendent Supran, I just had a comment.
Yes, just through you, Mr. Chair, just from a safe schools perspective, and the policies around safe schools and progressive discipline, it will be treated like alcohol. So there will be consequences for possession, for usage on school property, so even if they're in just possession and not utilizing or using marijuana, there will be consequences in the same manner that there would be for alcohol currently. And so we, it's not tobacco, that's not our parallel, that from a safe schools perspective, we are, we're looking at the parallel being alcohol, that it's 19 years of age for possession and usage, and there'll be school consequences. I can't speak to criminal consequences. Typically, the Halton Regional Police rarely charges students even currently for alcohol possession or marijuana possession, depending on their, the student's history. So from a school perspective, though, there would be no difference than alcohol.
Trusty Quinn, you have a follow-up.
The possession part, it's a lot easier to carry around whatever amount of marijuana is allowed on your person than it is to carry around a legal amount of alcohol. And this, I think, will come into play with staff, with adults visiting the school who can legally possess marijuana. They'll be coming from the vendor, buying some, having it in their pocket, entering the school, picking up their kids, whatever, it's not gonna be illegal, and we will have marijuana on our school on a regular basis, I think. So this is what I think our policy has to envision, is the ubiquity of marijuana, the size of it, and then, and the government's interest in not only making it freely available as a product that is acceptable in our society for the first time, and preventing youth from having access to it. So I don't know how we're gonna square that circle on a policy that affects everyone in the school board.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It would be very difficult to be able to monitor someone having possession who is allowed to have possession of marijuana. Certainly, for them using it on our site, it is clearly stated in law that they are not allowed to. But to be able to know that someone has it on them, it would be hard to be able to identify that for anybody to have it, just as possibly cigarettes, some people may have cigarettes on them, and we wouldn't know that they'd have them in our school. So, but we clearly state that cigarettes are not allowed to be used on school property. It'd be the same in terms of the use of marijuana, which is illegal to do so, so that would be clearly stated within our policies that it wouldn't be permitted.
Trusty Quinn.
So potentially, we could have staff members carrying marijuana on school property because it's legal, because they just have it in their coat, and I think, Tim, one obvious sign of possession of marijuana is a very strong odor that it has. So that's, we could have odorous adults in the school with marijuana, legally, without breaking any laws, and then that adult possession of marijuana will go a long way to, I'm trying to figure out how we say this, the example made by adults in a school possessing marijuana, and then us telling the entire cohort of children from grade, from JK to grade 12, that marijuana is bad for them. I'm not, I'm not sure how we can allow marijuana on our school property if we are trying to protect them from the influence of it.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not disagreeing with your point of view in regards to what I think or you think in terms of marijuana, I'm not. However, the same could be said about alcohol, that, you know what, people of 19 years of age or older are allowed to consume alcohol, whether or not we believe it's proper or it's good for you. You know what, some of our students are seeing adults consume alcohol. Unfortunately, that's with the way the legislation is being passed, cannabis is gonna be the same thing at, from July 1st on. I don't disagree with your perspective in terms of a personal view, but I just don't know where we can go in terms of policy to state that we can't allow someone to have possession of it.
Well, I think we can make a policy saying that we won't allow someone to have possession of it.
Just a clarification, we can put it in policy, whether or not we can monitor that and enforce that, that's another position, I guess. That's more of the position that my point is, is that we have it in policy, but to have it in policy and not to be able to monitor it or be able to do things about it, that's the tough part.
Trusty Row.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really don't see the, I know what you're saying, but it's just like people, there are teachers who still smoke, so they smell when they come in, so, and they carry cigarettes around in their pockets on school property, so they know they can't take them out, that's the law. And it's the same as people who bring peanuts into a school. If the school is declared peanut-free, I mean, they might have a snack in their car, but what do we, if it doesn't come out publicly, then I don't think there's anything we can do about it. They're following the law, 'cause they're allowed to carry around cigarettes, they're allowed to carry around peanuts.
Further comments? So I think, I think the next steps forward is for staff to bring us any policy that specifically affects and the changes that would take place, I guess today is a starting point, any other comments?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. We will, staff will take a look at what policies we believe it certainly has an impact on, and those policy changes and amendments will come forward over the next few policy meetings to verify and to make those amendments.
We can have further discussion at that time unless anyone has anything else. Okay. So information items, did you wanna comment on 5.1 or 5.2, which was included in the Optional French programs? Okay, just procedural, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just the procedure, the information brought to you for French, optional French program, we wanted to make sure we put in the changes in regards to the lottery. It was just a generic comments in regards to taking out a first-come, first-served process of students gaining access to the program, and putting in comments in the registration section and the waiting list in regards to a lottery will occur.
Thank you, and... Trusty Robina.
Thank you. With regard to registration, under your third bullet there, Tim, registration will occur online or at the school if required. Can you give me an example, please, of why it would be at the school, why it would be required?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If someone doesn't have access to electronic computers, that the school would be able to allow them to use a computer and do it online.
Trusty Quinn.
How else do we contact parents to let them know about the availability of a French-language program if not online? Is there any other printed material that's sent home to let them know that it's an option?
Through you, Mr. Chair. When we do send out that information to, say, the registration process, we can include that in the information, the communication that goes out. Through you, Mr. Chair. It would go out as a system message, and information would go out to the grade, if they're grade fours, they would have that information so that they would know for the registration process, for kindergarten, for the early French.
Okay. Okay, moving on to 5.2. Any comments on the telephones in schools?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This procedure, it is an old procedure, and through talking with our IT administrator, it is a policy that really does not capture what takes place with our phone lines these days. At one point in time, they certainly had general lines that were used. Now they, what he was telling me was they pool their lines so that the needs for schools are disseminated based on those needs. A lot of our new schools, phone lines are directly into classrooms, so it is, the access is a lot more available than they have been in the class in our old school. So he sees this procedure as being redundant, so that's why we are going to rescind this.
Questions or comments on that one? I see none. 5.3, just the upcoming agenda items. So on that note, we will have a motion to move in camera. Trusty Quinn?